The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'll call the council to order. Let the roll reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. Tonight, we're going to start with a couple of proclamations, so I'm going to head over to the podium over here. Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Steve Bell to come up, the executive director here in Hastings of the Animal Arc facility. We have, council, you see in our packets, a proclamation. I'd like to have the proclamation read. We'll start with Councilmember Vaughn.
Whereas Animal Arc, a registered Minnesota-based 501(c)(3) nonprofit, is Minnesota's largest no-kill animal shelter and...
Whereas since its inception in 1977, Animal Arc has rescued, rehabilitated, and rehomed thousands of companion animal dogs and cats and...
Whereas Animal Arc has been instrumental in promoting the cause of animal welfare across the country and...
Whereas Animal Arc has been headquartered in the historic city of Hastings, Minnesota, for over 20 years and...
Whereas the city of Hastings, its governing body and its citizens wish to express support for their hometown animal welfare organization.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that September 10, 2016, shall be known as Animal Arc Day in the city of Hastings, Minnesota.
Okay. Well, we're fortunate enough to have Mr. Bell here to give a brief presentation about Animal Arc here in Hastings. You know, it's right in our backyard. I think many of us are aware of Animal Arc and the great work that they do there, but sometimes it's always good to refresh ourselves of what's going on. And now that we've designated this Saturday as Animal Arc Day, Mr. Bell, I want to present you this proclamation and please feel free to address the council and the citizens about Animal Arc here in Hastings.
Thank you, sir. Kendrick, can you come up and help me with the slideshow?
Okay.
So, first thing I wanted to mention was, thank you very much. We really consider this an honor and a privilege to get the support of the city. We've currently got about 90 animals in our animal shelter, and the way to get them to permanent homes is to get people into the shelter. And the way to get people into the shelter is publicity and awareness, and this is a great step, and we really appreciate the support. So, along those lines, this Saturday, we're having an open house from 11 to 4 at our animal shelter facility at 2600 Industrial Court. We've got a lot of stuff going on. We've got professional dog training seminars, wine and beer sampling, a lot of kids' activities, local vendors, food refreshments, and the like, so we encourage everybody to come on by, and there's no charge. And in case anybody's asking, who really is Animal Arc and what do we do? In 1977, we became one of the first rescues in the U.S. dedicated to the no-kill philosophy of animal sheltering, and in the last 40 years, we've never wavered from that philosophy, saving the lives of tens of thousands of homeless animals over the years. And since 1992, Hastings has been our home, and we've made a great contribution, I think, to reducing the homeless population in Hastings and Prescott and the surrounding communities through a variety of initiatives. And our mission, very simply, is to rescue, rehabilitate, and rehome companion animals by providing a safe, compassionate, no-kill environment until each animal is adopted and known a loving forever home. What do we do? We rescue. We rehabilitate.
Cute puppies, right?
I'm a little bit ahead of you. We rehabilitate if there's an animal in need, and whether they need physical help or emotional help or behavioral help, we'll work with them to get them well and get them adoptable. And the end goal and game is, we rehome them. And we look to find a permanent home for every animal that comes into our care. So, picture's worth a thousand words. And what do we hope to do in the next year or two? We want to increase our level of adoptions. We want to improve and rebuild our network of homes that foster animals. We want to continue to educate the public, both locally and statewide, about animal welfare issues, and we want to continue to interact with you guys in our community and build awareness and involvement in our rescue efforts.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much.
We really do appreciate the honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everything you do, Brock. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your Honor, can I just tell you that a cat that we got 15 and a half years ago is still... She's had a lot of lives, and she's still going strong in her house. We've had to... We're doing some medication right now because she's kind of getting up there in years, probably about, what, 85 in human, but she's been a great cat.
Sure. Great alumni, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could add as well, we did purchase two puppy dogs from Animal Arc here in Hastings, and they were just a joy to our household. They certainly are family members, and I personally greatly appreciate everything that Animal Arc does for the community and the nation. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Take care.
You're in.
Thank you. Is Matt here? Matt, can you come on up? Matt is the executive director of the Dakota County Historical Society, and we have tonight a proclamation before the city council of appreciation of Dakota County Historical Society's Laduke Estate. And we'll start with Lori on that side to read the proclamation.
Whereas the Dakota County Historical Society's Laduke Historic Estate is celebrating its 150th anniversary in 2016 and...
Whereas the house was built from 1862 to 1866, with the Laduke family moving into the unfinished house in 1865, living there through its completion in 1866 and...
Whereas the house is of the Gothic Revival architectural style, and the Carriage Barn and Ice House were all chosen from the 1852 book Cottage Residences by Andrew Jackson Downing and...
Whereas in 1940, Carol Simmons purchased the building to be used for his antique business, which was in operation through 1986, although Mr. Simmons donated the building to the Minnesota Historical Society in 1958 and...
Whereas on June 24, 2005, the Laduke Estate was turned over to the city of Hastings, which has worked with the Dakota County Historical Society to preserve the house and share the unique history of the Laduke family, their estate, and the city of Hastings and...
Whereas the Laduke Historic Estate serves as a location for meetings of the Friends of the Laduke and the Historic Hastings, the Duke Book Group, and a stitch and tie which tells stories of the General William Gates Laduke, his wife Mary Bronson Laduke, his children, the Hastings Needlework Company, Carol Simmons, and former slave George Daniels.
Now, therefore, be it resolved during the annual Civil War Weekend Celebration on September 10, 11, 2016, themed 1866, a homecoming, that the Laduke Historic Estate's 150th anniversary is recognized, and the work of those who keep the history of the estate and the Hastings community alive is commended, adopted by the city council of the city of Hastings the 6th day of September 2016. Matt, thank you. Appreciate everything, and please feel free to talk about the weekend coming up and take your proclamation with you.
All right, I want to thank everyone again for the designation and proclamation for the event. I do have some calendars of events, if anyone's interested. I have 20 copies. I can leave those for everyone. But we do have a Saturday and a Sunday full of events. A lot of the stuff going on Saturday will repeat on Sunday, but the difference will be a bunch of the special presentations that are going on, including Mayor Hicks reading the proclamation during the flag-raising ceremony. And I believe in the past, you've had the pleasure of Amy even bringing in the flagpole, so you at least know what it looks like now during the event. So, we appreciate the support that's been given in the past, and hopefully, we can continue that in the future, and I will leave these here. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Counselor? All right. Really forward to the weekend.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Maybe we can get this off the screen. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks. Okay, council, before us tonight, we have the minutes of the regular meeting of August 15, 2016. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. Council items to be considered, or any council items to be considered? Seeing none, council consent agenda, what you wish. Councilmember Brock makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. That motion is now before the body. Is there discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to community development on our agenda. We have a resolution tonight requesting a variance at 295 West 15th Street. Counsel, I will caution you that a variance request requires six votes to pass. John, welcome to the meeting. Very glad to have you here. We'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members, the action before you tonight is a variance request at the property located here at 295 West 15th Street. The property is located south side of 15th Street, just west of Eddie Street. The variance is to the side yard setback in order to put up a carport. It's a two-and-a-half-foot variance from the seven-foot side yard setback requirement. The planning commission did review this on August 22nd, did recommend approval of it on a seven-to-zero vote. During the meeting and up to this point, we have not heard any comments for or against the item from any of the neighbors. So, to look at the item a little bit more in specifics here, this is the house in question. The carport itself would be right in front of the garage as it sits. And I'll make a clarification on carports here. This would be a structural carport, something that would be attached to the home itself. This would be different from a portable carport or something that would be put up like a tent-like structure. That's not what this would be. This would be a structural addition to the home, essentially filling up the gap here in front of the garage. However, in order to line up with the garage here, it would need to extend within the side yard setback. You can see at the location here, there's vegetation directly to the east here that abuts the property owner, which limits the impact of the property itself. And the property also is very small in size. So, move forward here. This gives an idea of where the carport would be in the area in red. Another drawing here, which is a little more difficult to follow. I'll go back. So, this is the area in question. And so, within the resolution itself, we have identified specific reasons why the variance should be granted in the standpoint, pointing out specifically that the size of the home, the property, and the location of the existing structure are all factors that would mitigate approving the variance in the standpoint. So, I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Counsel, the sentence before us, what you wish. Question, Your Honor? Counsel... Question? Councilmember Nelson, did you...
John, before I make a motion, Your Honor, I just want to thank you for taking the time to help us understand that carport thing. I had originally asked that question. I said, "Is this a portable carport?" And I thought we did something about that a handful of years ago, and you came up with the solution that back in 2007, we were kind of getting rid of those portable carports, and you said, "No, this is going to be an extension of the house," which made me feel a little bit more comfortable with moving forward in this direction. I drove by the property a couple of times, and it looks like there's... The vegetation there, that must have been an early spring vegetation look, because there's a lot of bushes that separate the neighbor's house from the rear yard setback for the side yard for the other person. So, he probably hasn't really even... Couldn't even see that part. So, I appreciate that, John. So, with that, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation to approve the variance of the side yard setback.
Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to approve the variance resolution, seconded by Councilmember Alaji. Councilmember Alaji.
Thank you, Your Honor. Not my intention to correct either, Your Honor or staff, but I do see here, you mentioned that this requires a variance. This is a variance, therefore, which is what I'm used to, requires six out of seven. I am noting on the memo, it says, "A simple majority vote is necessary for approval." Are we talking about a variance in the traditional sense, or is this something different?
Counselor?
I believe this would be a standard variance that under city code would require 75% of the council to approve, so that's what makes it the six votes.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah. The memo was an error.
Fair enough. I don't... Yeah, it wasn't my intent to call that out, just to make sure that we were going to vote properly. All right, thank you.
We have a motion before the bodies. There's a continued discussion to the motion. Councilmember Balsanik.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. John, is the existing garage, does that extend into the side yard setback then, right now?
The existing garage right now is right at the side yard setback line. This is about seven-and-a-half feet away at present. The carport garage... The carport itself would extend a little bit further into it here. One of the reasons that the applicant stated the need for it was, if he was to keep it within that seven or eight feet that is open there, he'd be able to fit the vehicle in, the trailer in only, but not have any room to maneuver any other items in or out.
And then, another question, are they going to build a new roof over the existing garage to attach to the carport then? I can't tell by the drawing.
Sure. Yeah, that's my understanding, is that the roof would extend from the garage itself towards 15th Street. I'm not sure if there would be a gap, a small gap between the garage itself and the beginning of the carport, but it would primarily be covered at that point and attached to the home.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion to the motion before the body? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have the 2016/70 Tourism Bureau Budget and Marketing Plan, and I will recognize Melanie.
I'm just going to queue up Kristi's presentation.
To start out and introduce our special guest.
Yeah, I'm just going to queue up Kristi's presentation here. Thanks, John. Well, we had it up earlier, so...
Tonight, we're privileged tonight to have the president of the Hastings Chamber of Commerce here, Kristi. We're very glad to have you here, and welcome to the meeting, and we're looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for having me here tonight. It's an exciting time for us. The chamber and the tourism board kicks off our fiscal year October 1st, so I wanted to come tonight to talk about the Tourism Bureau, in particular, the marketing plan for the upcoming fiscal year. So, for a quick refresher, I wanted to name our Board of Advisors. We have three members of the lodging community on our board, Pam Thorson with Thorwood Rentals, Mark Vetvik with Country Inn, and Pam Stefanhagen with Neckles Inn. And we also have two members of city staff on our board, Chris Jenkins, Director of Parks and Rec, and Lisa Feller, our Communications Coordinator. Our board liaison is Amy Rentsch, who used to be the marketing manager over at Afton Elps, and now she is the Director of the Midwest Ski Association. And we have Meka Page as a new board member coming on this year, the owner of Breakaway Arts Cafe, and she also represents a member of the hub, the arts hub in town. Barb Hollenbach is second childhood owner, and she represents downtown businesses. And Lacey Vreeland with Eye Candy Refined is our social media guru, since she has an enormous following with social media through Eye Candy. So, this year, we got together in August, and we had a retreat with all of our board members, and we also invited some special guests from the Explore Minnesota Tourism and the University of Minnesota Extension Tourism Program to talk about a couple ideas and marketing promotions that we had discovered throughout the year. So, out of that retreat, we came up with three goals, and those goals were to assess our community assets and identify potential development for our tourism in Hastings, increase tourism traffic, which is an obvious one, and determine a tracking matrix to track it, and then provide faster and more consistent information for our visitors. So, to follow up with those goals, we came up with strategies. And the first strategy for our assessing the community assets is to engage in this program called the Tourism Assessment Program, which is put on by the University of Minnesota Extension. And what it is, is it's a 12-month program that combines inventory from our local community as well as inventory from, they're called mystery shoppers, or the visitor's first impression team that the University of Minnesota would put together for us. And what they would do is, they would stop in randomly, and they would shop in our community, they would dine in our restaurants, and they would stay at our hotels and provide our feedback or provide their feedback to us. And then, the third step is, a team of experts from the University of Minnesota would come to Hastings and provide a SWOT analysis, and they would collectively combine the community perspective, the mystery shopper's perspective, and their perspective into a report that would provide us with short-term and long-term goals and then ways to achieve those goals in the future. So, that program is something that we are hoping to kick off either this fall or starting in January. The second goal, to increase tourism traffic, we're going to continue to use the advertising that we've done in the past. So, we right now advertise through the publications that you see on the screen, and a lot of our focus has been on our bike trails. We seem to get a lot of visitors that come into the visitor bureau wanting to explore our bike trails, and we also get several calls about our bike trails and through the city's website, it looks like a lot of the hits on the bike... There's a high amount of hits on the bike trail site. So, we, this year, partnered with the Bike and Height Guide, and we put Hastings Complete Trail Mac in the Bike and Height Guide. And then, we also focused on the Minnesota bike trails and Minnesota trails to highlight what's happening with the Greenway Trail, I believe it is, and then just the 30 miles of paved trails that we have. We also put together a complete visitor's guide, which our staff puts together in the office, and we send it out to tourism bureaus in the metro, and then we also send it out when we get requests online. Another part of this goal is to potentially partner with a public relations firm, and this came up from a couple of our Board of Advisors that have worked with PR firms and found great success with it. And the reason for that is, right now, we're already doing the press releases, we're really starting to promote our social media, but we don't necessarily know all the key players in that top media sector. So, that's where, if we could partner with a public relations firm, hopefully, we can start seeing all the excitement that's happening down at the pavilion and on the Hastings River Walk. Maybe we can start seeing that on TV. Maybe we can start seeing more articles in Star Tribune. So, the thought behind that is to put together a task force that would interview a few PR firms and see if they could provide us what we need. And the third goal is to provide fast and consistent information. And so, to complete that goal, we're planning on completing our tourism website and then implementing a few new social media campaigns. This year, we had worked on separating the chamber website and the tourism website, still with clear buttons on each website, which could go back and forth, and the chamber website launched, so now we're just in the works of completing the tourism website. I tried to go through that quickly, so I wanted to open it up for any questions. I know you all have the budget in front of you and the marketing plan, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Kristi. Appreciate that presentation. Council, questions or comments? Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you. Thanks, Kristi. I was just curious, looking at the budget here, do you think, is it after the, working with the public relations firm, that we'll start to do more online advertisement? It seemed, we're doing a lot of print ad, it looks like.
Yeah.
And I'd be curious, do you see a vision going that way, where we get... Or is everybody still going to the old-fashioned ad, print ad there?
Well, the nice thing about the print is that oftentimes, they have an online ad that come with them. So, they will do their own ad on their website, and oftentimes, it can link to a complete article. So, we choose, we try to choose print advertising that also has an online presence as well. But we are going to continue, the new website, I think, will be huge to increase our online presence, and we're also going to continue. We had a lot of success with the Hastings River Walk campaign, so we're going to continue to boost our social media as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kristi, thank you for this. I did have the same question about the print, but I'm there, like the, that you're going to be involved in the Partners Guide that will be at Travel Centers, I think, is a good idea. I remember seeing, it was somewhere in southern Minnesota, and stopped, we were stopped at a rest stop, and they had a travel guide for something in Afton, and it was, it was like, oh, you know, this is probably where we need to be, so I think that's a really a great idea, a good use of that print money.
Thank you.
My other question is, I saw up there that you had something about matrix. So, do you think that by this time next year, you'll be able to give us some metrics on the effect of what we're doing and if the promotion that you're working on is actually bringing in folks, or will you be able to, like, get how many hits we have on a website, or what's your plan?
Exactly, yeah. And that's what we're still working on, so we have largely focused on increasing the stay in our hotels as a way to track it. So, we're looking for other opportunities, and I really think that the experts with the University of Minnesota Extension Tourism Department will help us in honing in on that. We've come up with a couple, a couple different ideas on, you know, increasing the number of followers in social media, once we have the website, how many hits, and what pages are we focusing on. But we're hoping to get some insight from the experts through this Tourism Assessment Program as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Vaughn?
Just to follow up to that, and I call them experts, because when I worked my daughter's volleyball game, I think the experts coming in the door. The one thing that I heard a lot was, is they were looking for a collaboration so they get the one-stop shop. They wanted, they didn't know where to go. They were just coming to the high school and asking the person, usually the 12-year-old working the gate, but where can I go? Where can I go eat? Where can I... They're looking for that option, so...
Right.
My question then is to follow up, is how much is the high school involved, or how much is the youth sports involved in the tourism board yet? Are they there yet, or are we not ready to take that step to say, "Let's bring in all the players to this that can help tourism"?
Sure. We haven't had a ton of involvement with the youth sports, but I think it's an excellent idea. And we have two spots open on our board, so, actually, one, I'm sorry, one spot. So, that's a great suggestion.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? Well, thank you, Kristi, for coming forth tonight. I look forward to the study that you're having done with the collaboration with the U of M.
Yes.
And I look forward to that report when it comes through, and greatly aid our efforts here in the city of Hastings. And of course, we continue to work together and collaborate. We'll continue to do so.
Great. Thank you so much for having me.
You're very welcome. Counsel, next upon the, on our agenda under administration, we have the 2017 budget. We have before us the preliminary 2017 city property tax levy and preliminary budget, and also setting the truth in taxation hearing date, and then also, we'll be considering a resolution to approve the proposed 2017 HEDRA and HRA special tax levy. Melanie, you want to help us start us out?
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. I will, I will build on the comment from Kristi's presentation that Park and Rec Director Chris Jenkins and I have talked about, how do we get our youth sports engaged in promoting? So, when people are in town and they're spending a whole day, in my, in my case, softball tournament, where do I go to have lunch? And so, we have, we have begun that process, but we need to loop Kristi and her folks in on that as well, so...
Great.
So, thank you for introducing that, Mayor, and council members. I have before you tonight some resolutions that we are asking you to adopt, setting our preliminary levy and setting our truth in taxation, and setting our preliminary levy for the HEDRA and HRA. And the HEDRA board will be acting on this at their next meeting this Thursday on the 8th. So, earlier this year, we met with the city council in a workshop, and the intent of that was to go through trends and data and give some, provide some preliminary information on what we were seeing with the budget, as well as market value and that information, and get some feedback from the full council before we went to our department heads and then the finance committee. So, the direction that we got at that meeting was, number one, we didn't, you didn't want to see ongoing operating costs being paid for by one-time funds like LGA. So, we needed to, we took that direction, and we had just went back and worked on the budget to make sure that we weren't using our local government aid to fund ongoing operations. We then asked, what's the appetite? What's the thought on the levy increase for next year? And what we heard was anywhere between zero and maintaining our levy consistent, which is at 63.58%. So, based on those preliminary feedback, I went back to the department heads, we released the budgets, provided them a summary of the comments received by the council. We also walked through some of the budget challenges we have, as well as the opportunities, and our departments prepared their budget requests. And then, we met with the finance committee chaired by Councilmember Schultz, councilmembers Alangi and Nelson as well, and walked through all the budget recommendations that department heads had made. And we spent, oh, probably, we spent two days, probably eight, nine hours, talking about the totality of the budget. At that point, the finance committee recommended a levy of $12,960,920. That is a 3.6% increase over last year. It does result in a tax rate, estimated tax rate of 62.27%. And this chart will show you some historical data. The blue is our local tax capacity. So, you see, we had a couple of years where it went down... So you see, we had a couple of years where it went down, we're back on the right trajectory. It's, it is, it is increasing. I draw your attention to the yellow line in the middle and that's our tax rate. So we're, continue to remain flat to go down with that. And this is a little bit larger number, so you'll see that from 2012 to 2017, our tax rate has consistently decreased. A little uptick last year, but projected to go down again next year, the tax rate. So if we look at our operating revenues, just a quick snapshot, we, about 50% are through levy, 40% is acquired through charges for services, and the other 10% is miscellaneous other revenue sources. And then we break down our operating expenses and on the top, you'll see we've got that broken down by type. So about 50% of our costs are driven by personnel costs and that's not unusual. Public safety, infrastructure maintenance, parks and trails, that all is very personnel-intensive services. And if you look at the bottom chart, that's by function. So you'll see that about a third of our budget goes to public safety, another 25% goes to public works. And so a significant portion of our, our budget goes to those core services as would be expected. Now, I put this in here, I'm not going to talk about this, these are some of the fun projects, to take a term from Councilmember Nelson. We do have some things in the budget next year that we are proposing, that we think are good investments in, in the budget for next year, taking care of the assets that we do have. So a lot of this is reinvestment and also taking a look at the council's strategic objectives, which center around economic development, redevelopment, transportation and transit and community image. We also are proposing in next year's budget to finish the final phase of riverfront renaissance. That's the alley improvements behind Second Street, adjacent to the substation. What we're, what we have planned for that is screening that substation, making that corridor, cleaning that up, doing some utility underground. This was part of the vision of the council and so we are proposing that we complete that next year. And finally, we have a neighborhood infrastructure project that we are also proposing. One of the questions that the council challenges staff to do, and we take that challenge seriously, is what is the impact on the homeowner of the budget decisions that are made? And this chart here shows the impact over a number of years. So on far left, $150,000 home, far right, $250,000 home. It ranges from page 2014 to proposed 2017. I'll call your attention to the chart second from the left, which is $175,000 home, that's a medium, median home value. And what you'll see is if that property value remained flat from year to year, the local tax impact on the homeowner would go down. Now, we are seeing, as I talked about, a market value increase, about 4.15% for next year. So properties may see an increase in their valuation. And that property, it would be estimated at about a $41 increase based on valuation. But based on the preliminary levy, there would be a $21 reduction because our tax rate is going down. So the overall impact would be $20 a year, which is about a $1.67 increase a month. So tonight, I'd ask you to approve two resolutions, setting the preliminary levy and then setting the HEDRA, HRA special tax levy. For our next steps, we're going to put, be putting some more information out on the website. Last year, we created a budget in brief, we'll be doing something similar to that. This presentation will go out there as well. Because the budget isn't finalized, we're not going to put out all the detail because we still have some work to do. We need to work with the finance committee on some final details and so we're not going to be putting all the detail out yet. We're going to give us some time to work on that. And then we'll look to the finance committee to help us determine those final budget and levy recommendations for the council. The truth in taxation hearing will be Monday, December 5th at 7:00. And then the council will be asked to adopt the final budget and levy on the December 19th meeting. So with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Council, we're opening up for discussion on this, on this issue. We can open that up. Councilmember Alangi?
No, go ahead.
Oh.
Your Honor, I was going to defer to the chair of the finance committee.
Okay.
Thanks. I'll, I'll reserve what I, some of the standard comments of a chair for, for you, but I feel the same way that I know you feel about staff and everything else. Melanie, would you call up once again the, the first chart you had that had the multiple lines and the bars and say, thank you, and just, yeah, thank you. I just wanted folks, whether on TV or they're here tonight, to see, this is, in my opinion, you know, good government in action over a substantial period of time. And I just, I just think it bears, I mean, you did a great job of explaining it, but I want to take an additional moment, this is the last time I get to talk about budget for, at least as a public official, for some time. And I want to point out to both my constituents, other people in Hastings, the people maybe watching, kind of what's going on here. You're seeing the tax rate stays stable or actually trend downward at a time when property values or the capacity is, is going up, which is a good thing, allows us to have a larger budget while it doesn't create a lot of pain in people's wallets. It's what you want to see government do. You don't want to see us go too wild about it, you know, and, and make government grow at an amazing amount. At the same time, you do see the payroll budget increase and I wanted to take a moment to explain with your, with your permission, Your Honor and Madam Chair, that, you know, what, what we're seeing here is the fulfillment of a promise made to our community, including our firefighting community, with the study that was done for the firefighters, where we added full-time firefighters because we had, I don't think the study called them dangerously low levels, but levels of concern.
Stress.
In terms, stress, I think was the right, was the right term, in terms of the ability of our fire department to do their jobs as well as they're used to doing them. And so what you're seeing there is, is a, is a steady increase in the, in the amount. That is something that should probably level off over time, although another part of the increase is the increases in healthcare costs and some of the other things that are beyond the city's control. It does speak to the need to find a way nationally, as well as here in Hastings, to control healthcare costs. It is something that is going to continue to stress out our budget and hopefully nothing else will for the foreseeable future. But I just wanted to take that moment, Your Honor. This is, one of the reasons why, even though I, I often take this opportunity in September to kind of push a little bit and ask staff to, hey, can't you find a way to push it down, yell, vote for this, but I want you to try to come down a little bit more in December, which I am still going to say. I, I also wanted to add that I really think there's been a wonderful job by staff to bring us this far and also point out that there's not a lot of room to come down from this if we value the fire department, rescue department, like we value them, the police department, parks and rec, operations, all the great planning, all the great departments that we have here in the city. It, it costs money to do it, folks, and I think what you're seeing here is a reasonable restraint, a thoughtful approach to the budget. I've just been really proud of the last, you know, 12 years, I'll have more to say in December. I've just really been proud of the last 12 years to be part of these consecutive budgets which have managed us through very tough times, which you can see in the 2012, 2013 budget, to what I hope will be reasonably good times. And setting us up, heaven, heaven forbid there be another recession, there always will be, but heaven forbid there be another deep recession. We are as prepared as you can possibly be in terms of setting up our financial position for the future. So if, you know, I'll, I'll wait for any, for any motions, Your Honor, until the chair has spoken.
Okay. Before I let the chair have final thoughts, I'll just suggest that, I just want to ask a question. We, we looked at the different categories, they're all important, of the different, next one, with the, those. And under the economic development initiatives, I'm going to take the opportunity to have Kristi here. I know one of the things that we talked about, we certainly did it as a full council at one time, is to look at a community engagement process and look at planning of Vermillion Street and how we can improve that corridor. And I just want to ask the chair of the committee if that, if that program and the beginning of that process has been funded.
Your Honor, yes, it has.
Okay. I think that's a very important process here and we'll be working with our friends at the Chamber. And I know we're going to have meetings this fall regarding this because I want to begin that process, jump into it. So when we get into 2017 and that budget year, that, you know, we have a clear direction of how we're going to begin that process. I think it's very important for this community to look at the Vermillion Street corridor and, and its future and certainly for the businesses and residents and, and visitors. So I just wanted to ask that question. I appreciate that answer, councilmember. Is there any other further discussion outside of the chair? Because I'd like to have the chair get the last word in. Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you. Melanie, you had that chart up there about the homeowners' property, how we are concerned about that?
This one.
And I don't need the answer today, but I think it's worth us, how about the business owners that are out there, not the homeowners? I know it's a different equation, but is that something that we should, I recommend that we get this out in public, that this is what a business owner's expense is going to be too, not just a homeowner's potential?
I'm going to look to Rebecca. I think we've done some analysis in the past, but we will certainly make sure we include more, we'll work with Rebecca and her team to do that.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Now, Councilmember Brox.
I do have a question. I know the park playground equipment replacement is referenced generally. I assume that's not all parks. It's going to be a...
We've identified two parks, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that right.
That would, that would make you, for a very happy park and rec director, if we go to replace all of them.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Now, I'll defer to the chair of the finance committee, Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thanks for the insightful comments and questions from the councilmembers. I think just about everything's been covered, but I will say, and Councilmember Alangi and I believe Councilmember Nelson lived, lived with us through the dark days of '09, '10, when we did a lot of retrenchment in terms of staff, as well as just pulling back on some of our investment and maintenance opportunities, just because the budget was really in kind of a freefall. And if you look at what we've got in our recommended budget, a lot of it is either public safety, public works related, or it is an investment in the things that we really value. The La Duke, the La Duke mansion, replacing the roof, infrastructure, riverfront renaissance and some of the things that, well, let me, and the Aquatic Center, which is very important to this community. And some of those things that kind of get behind the scenes and get kind of boring, like computer and IT updates, which you often think about how, why do we have to spend money on that? But think about your home, you know, after about five or so years, you realize that the computer you have is just not functioning very well. And if we want to keep up with the demands that we have electronically and in our communication with our constituents, we have to keep up with that very well. So I just have to thank staff for all their hard work and for putting up with us because I'll tell you what, we are a crew when we get into a meeting. Well, I think we have a lot of fun, a lot of good jokes, but we're, and Rebecca is getting used to it. And to councilmembers Alangi and Nelson for coming in early and staying late when we've got a lot of things to do. And I, I understand this as Councilmember Alangi's last budget, but I have always, always appreciated your insight and don't always agree with you and that's okay, but we've gotten the job done. So thank you and we, I look forward to more discussions that we'll be having throughout the fall. And if anybody has any other questions, just feel free to float them past as the time, as things go on. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Brox?
I actually did come up with another question, which is, now that we've built the riverfront park, how are we calculating or quantifying the ongoing maintenance of that park? Because obvi, that seems like it will be somewhat of a new cost, since it's a large park. We haven't had it in the budget in the past. So how are we going to, I just, for me, when I'm looking at more detail later on in the process, it would be nice to know if we've been able to get our hands on what that additional cost is going to be. I know we haven't had a full year with it yet, but if we could quantify it in some way, I think that we asked about it before and we haven't really seen a full year at the park, so we didn't get any numbers. But it would be, I'm interested to see what that cost is going to be in maintenance and ongoing park requirements.
Your Honor and council, I can maybe give a partial answer right now, Councilmember Brox. We included a parkkeeper in this year's budget to not only keep, we've, we've raised our threshold for maintenance of our parks and knowing that we brought a large new park on board, we felt a new parkkeeper was appropriate for that. So if you're looking for those operating costs, cost of a new parkkeeper. As far as the programming costs, we had seed money in this year's budget. We've also been able to get a number of sponsorships. So the direction we've given staff is, there'll be some operating costs for programming, but we want it to be self-sustaining going forward. So we're working towards that model.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Schultz, I'll seek a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion, Your Honor. What is the first, what's the first thing we're doing, to adopt the levy?
Correct. Levy and preliminary budget.
I'll make that motion.
Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to adopt the resolution in regards to the 2017 preliminary city property tax levy and budget and setting the truth in taxation hearing date, which I believe is December 5th, Monday, December 5th. Second to that motion, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, council, we have the 2017 HEDRA, HRA special tax levy. It's probably no different than we've had in the other years, a 0.0185 or whatever that traditionally, so that is before us. Council, what you wish. Councilmember Alangi makes a motion to adopt that resolution, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Comments from the audience? Are there any comments from the audience this evening? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, council, announcements? Announcements? Councilmember Bolsonic?
Yes, Your Honor. I, I've raised a stir with my coveralls on occasion throughout the summer, so I thought I would show up with some of the fruits of our labor at 224 Seventh Street West. So I am passing out some cherry tomatoes.
I assume these are of nominal value, Councilmember Bolsonic?
Yes, yes, they are.
They're less than a $5 value, I hope?
Yeah. One, one for each person here up at the council table and there are hundreds more.
Well, thank you, councilmember.
Yeah. You may get some more here at the next meeting at the end of September.
Okay.
But my, my cherry tomatoes ended up six feet tall this year.
Wow. That looks extremely tasty, so thank you.
Yes. It's like, they're like candy, believe me.
That attire worked because they, they look like they're professionally done.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay. The coveralls are in the, are in the washing machine right now, so.
Your Honor, I snuck one.
Excellent. Thank you, councilmember. Appreciate that. Is there any other announcements, council? Seeing none, we have, I just have a few, a few more announcements. First of all, let's, let's hope we get this right, okay? Because on September 17th, it's going to be Rep, or Councilmember Brox's birthday. And did, and, and we're not, we're not fooling anybody, we're not, we're not causing you a headache there?
No.
Exactly. Happy birthday on the 17th of this month, councilmember. I hope you have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay.
I love birthday Constitution Day.
Oh, that's right, Constitution Day, that. Also the anniversary of battle of Antietam. So, well, a lot, that's a historic day, isn't it? All right. So September 17th, happy birthday, councilmember. Hope you have a great day that day. HEDRA will be meeting on this Thursday, September 8th at 6:30 PM. And I suspect that preliminary, well, we just passed in regards of, might come up that meeting, in regards to their levy. Also, the Fire Relief Association will be hosting its annual boya, just a reminder,